Well, not yet, Mayor. We're waiting to go live. Good. You go ahead, Mayor.
All right. Well, let me say good evening to everyone and welcome to Roanoke City Council recess session on May 28, 2020. And I will make sure that we move as quickly as possible through the preliminaries. All right, participation agenda today, we have participation by electronic communications pursuant to Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Section 2.2-3708, 2A, Virginia, 1950, as amended. Ordinance number 41703032720 and Resolution number 41704032720. At this time, I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And a quorum is present. I will lead us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Eternal God, we come to you today first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you, Lord, for how you have blessed us. And we thank you for all the things that you are doing in this community and still touching bodies, still encouraging people. We thank you for, it's good to see Councilwoman Price back with us and how you blessed her and her family. We pray for Vice Mayor Cobb and his family and all those families here that may be going through some things. Lord, we know that you are a healer. We know that you are a deliverer and we know most of all that you are a savior. So we thank you for all that you continue to do. Guide us this evening as we go through this process and listen to those that have come to share with us on our budget. But we give you praise. We give you glory. And in the high and holy name of your son did we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, the, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and just for all. Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. And I want to share with you why we are here tonight. Tonight's public hearing will not be televised live, nor will there be closed captioning for the hearing impaired. However, the public hearing will be video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Lastly, the public hearing will be replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Friday, May 29 at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, May 31st at 4:00 p.m. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct three separate public hearings. One, to recommend a budget for the city for fiscal year 2020, 2021 at 7:00 or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached. Item number two is a proposed real estate tax rate increase at 7:10 p.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached. Item number three, recommend 2020, 2021 HUD funds budget and 2020, 2024 annual update to the five-year consolidated plan at 7:20 p.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached. Based upon Executive Order Number 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 12, 2020, amended Executive Order Number 53 on April 15, 2020, Executive Order Number 55 issued by Governor Northam on March 30, 2020, and as amended by Executive Order Number 61 issued by Governor Northam on May 8, 2020, Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which was adopted on April 22, 2020, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2A, Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, ordinance number 41703032720 and Resolution number 41704032720. City Council will be conducting this recess session of City Council by electronic communication means without a quorum of City Council physically present, present in council chamber and without the presence of members of the public in the City Council Chamber. In order to avoid citizens an opportunity to provide comments to City Council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the Council during this regular session of City Council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city's clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov and at 540-853-2541 by 4:00 p.m. today, May 28. Citizens will also provided the option of leaving comments with regards to the recommended fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget on a voicemail system by calling 540-853-1110 by 4:00 p.m. on today, May 28. Those comments will be presented to City Council during the public hearing. All right, those citizens who have signed up to speak before the Council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address City Council by electronic communication means. All right, and we'll go now to-
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, this is Dan Callahan, Roanoke City Attorney. Mayor and members of council, I just want to clarify one point. This meeting is being broadcast live by RV TV.
Okay. All right, so we're live. We're live. All right. At public hearing in 5A.
Excuse me, Mayor, I made a mistake. I guess we're, we're not live, but we're, it's captioned. It'll be captioned, but, so. So it's, it's being captioned. It's not live. I apologize, mistake. So the, the, your video will be rebroadcast, but it'll be rebroadcast with captions. So, just to clarify, but you are being, you're live on Facebook Live. You're streaming there.
Okay. All right, we always operate, though we're live anyway, anytime we get here. That's given. All right, item five is public hearing 5A. Recommended fiscal year 2020, 2021 city Roanoke budget. I am opening the public hearing and I will call on our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to introduce speakers, read emails submitted by citizens and present voice messages left by citizens, left by citizens. So, Madam Clerk, I will ask you to please introduce our speakers.
We have one email and nine speakers. I will now read the email. I am Barbara Dirk, 2607 Roslinum Avenue, Southwest Roanoke, Virginia, 24014. I am speaking to the budget regarding the need to prioritization transportation funds to make Roanoke safe for all people. I am a vulnerable road user using alternative modes of transportation, should not judge the worth of an individual. People walk and bicycle because of need or by choice. All persons regardless, regardless, should be protected by our laws and transportation infrastructure to safely be able to reach a destination. Designate a transportation engineer to work on pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure projects. Give the title and authority of pedestrian and bicycle transportation engineer to a member of staff. Goal: To overcome the implementation of safe walking and bicycling corridors in all sections of Roanoke City. Prioritize monies to implement bicycle and walking strategies mentioned in plans previously passed so Roanoke can be safe for all residents. Note one, the Brandon and Main Street intersection, 18-year-old Mackenzie Bayers was on the, was one of two pedestrians hit by vehicles on May 15. Collision, question mark. There are ways this could have been avoided. Number two, Wise Avenue has just been repaved. Wise Avenue is a major bicycle route for cyclists. Prioritize ways for pedestrians and bicyclists to safely connect between Vinton and southeast Roanoke. If Roanoke is the hub of the wheel for transportation in the Roanoke Valley, then Wise Avenue is one of the major spokes that keeps commuting corridors open. Corridor transportation studies for, number three, corridor transportation studies for Jefferson Street, Avonham Avenue, Broadway, McClanahan, and an economic development study for Franklin Road are needed to plan adequately for Corrigan's planned expansion. Budget monies for education, engineering, and enforcement on how to protect vulnerable road users. Ask your lobbyists to provide legislation, legislation to, to fines motor vehicle drivers for killing a vulnerable road user, Barbara Dirk. Now we have our speakers. Speaker one is Annette Lewis.
Hello, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, council members, and City Manager Cowell. For 55 years, TAP has provided services to the disproportionately poor. The reasons for being in poverty vary. It can be due to systems, circumstances, implicit biases, lack of resources, lack of knowledge, or lack of well-informed choices. We believe no one wakes up in the morning and says, I want to be poor. We also believe that everyone can succeed if given the opportunity. Thank you because your financial support has helped TAP create opportunities. The COVID-19 crisis started in another country, moved to the U.S., Virginia, the city of Roanoke, and the addresses of the poor. We knew COVID-19 would cause illnesses and death, but many didn't expect all of the harm the pandemic has caused. If some of us were surprised, imagine the surprise of those who were trying to keep a roof over their head but found themselves homeless. Those trying to go to work but found a locked door with a sign that read "Closed" due to COVID-19. While eating a meal found there wasn't any more food in the refrigerator. While trying to keep their lights on found they couldn't pay the bill. While getting ready to change the baby found they didn't have the money to buy the diapers or milk for the next feeding. While trying to escape abuse, had nowhere to go. In two months, TAP spent over $170,000 helping people with emergency needs. We placed 68 families in hotels, distributed 2,500 bags of food and hot meals, distributed 1,992 diapers and 5,000 wipes, helped 200 families with rent, utility bills, cleaning supplies, and more, assisted 27 undocumented immigrants with food, answered 25% more domestic violence hotline calls, helped 20 businesses apply for CARES Act and TAP small business loans. We thank you, City Manager Cowell, for the foresight of developing a COVID-19 loan fund that will be managed by TAP. It will help small businesses in the city of Roanoke recover from the devastation of COVID-19. TAP would like to continue to meet unexpected needs while still educating, training, job placing, weatherizing homes, providing second chances, and helping the abused and poor become self-supporting. Please continue the allocation of $160,000 so that TAP can leverage the necessary state and federal dollars to continue to provide opportunity for the disproportionately poor. Thank you so much.
Our second speaker is Charlotte Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, City Council members, and City Manager Cowell. I am Charlotte Moore, the Chair of the TAP Board. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to share the importance of your support of TAP. Each year, TAP serves approximately 5,000 people who, for one reason or the other, have fallen on hard times. They seek TAP's assistance to gain an education, skill employment, escape domestic violence, live in safe, affordable housing, or start or expand a small business. As a result, $160,000 TAP receives from the city, we are able to leverage the dollars by at least $4 for every dollar received. Failure to receive the dollars would jeopardize TAP's ability to help some of the most vulnerable citizens, like the 100 homeless veterans that TAP helps each year find jobs and housing. One homeless veteran who TAP helped to settle into an apartment came back to TAP, happy because he now had a home, but also came back because he needed a mattress for his bed. Without your funds, TAP wouldn't be able to answer the 1,000 hotline callers who sought to escape abuse. As you heard from Annette Lewis, the hotline calls have increased by 25% in comparison to last year at this time. One victim with eight children recently received help from TAP's domestic violence services to relocate because her husband tried to kill her. Without your funds, TAP wouldn't be able to help around 200 returning citizens each year who felt hopeless after leaving prison. Some were dads not only seeking a second chance at making a better life for himself, but also wanting to learn how to be a good parent. One of the returning citizens shared his story at a TAP board meeting. He has an older brother who desired to become a positive role model for his siblings. He said to us that without TAP, he wouldn't have a job with benefits and a 401K plan. Since that meeting, he sought by TAP to introduce the staff to his new bride. I could go on and on about the lives that TAP has impacted, but I only have three minutes and you will hear from or have heard from some of those whose lives TAP has touched. I close by thanking you for your financial support and the confidence in TAP shown by the mayor and City Council members during the May 4 council meeting. As you make critical budget decisions, we hope that you will again allocate TAP the same amount of funding as allocated in this program year, $160,000, so it can continue to leverage critical dollars to help the communities poor. Thank you so much.
Speaker three, Keisha Preston.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name's Keisha Preston. I'm a Roanoke, Virginia native and I very realistically might not be here to address you all today for it not for the help that I received from TAP. In 2016, I found myself finally ending an abusive relationship with zero dollars, no job, and three children to feed. I knew the severity of the situation that I was in and I knew that I couldn't survive it on my own, so I immediately reached out to TAP for help. My finances had been destroyed, but I was also being tormented with harassment and credible threats against my safety on an almost daily basis for an entire year while the courts continued to allow my abuser to walk free with a gun. My protective order did nothing to make my abuser leave me alone and reporting him when he violated it only made him increasingly mad and in turn increasingly dangerous. When I felt at risk, TAP assigned me a caseworker who helped me create a safety plan. When I was nearly intimidated into dropping charges, TAP assigned me an advocate who accompanied me to court. When I felt alone, TAP directed me to a support group where I met other people who understood exactly what I was going through because they were living it as well. When my utilities were at risk of being turned off, TAP helped keep my children warm. When I was two weeks away from becoming homeless, TAP was right there searching tirelessly for apartments right alongside me. And when it all became too much and I nearly ended my own life, TAP provided me with the mental health services that I needed. Because of TAP, I avoided going to a homeless shelter. I pulled myself back together financially. I survived the worst mental health crisis of my life and I'm on track to become a homeowner again someday. And because of TAP, I found the courage to share my story and use what I've been through to write a bill to change Virginia state law preventing other victims from facing the housing discrimination that I encountered. In the past three months alone, I've advocated for victims' rights in the U.S. House of Representatives. I've worked alongside personal heroes such as Gloria Steinem and Cameron Hall. I've created conversations on how to keep victims safe at a national and federal level and it's because of the help that I receive from TAP that I'm no longer a victim and I've arrived here. Organizations like TAP help save lives and when they lose funding, people die. The U.N. has predicted more than 15 million new cases of domestic violence as a result of COVID-19, which means now more than ever, domestic violence services matter and funding cuts would be a literal matter of life and death. I'm so very grateful for the support that City Council has shown TAP over the years and I hope that we can count on you to continue the same level of support moving forward. Thank you.
Speaker four, Nicole Osborne.
I was diagnosed. Hello, my name is Nicole. Hello?
Hello?
What, sorry, my name is Nicole. When I came to Roanoke, I was nine months pregnant and just recently out of jail. I went to Bethany Hall and during my stay, I learned about domestic violence because I even thought about giving my child up for adoption. Not only I didn't have anything, but I just couldn't imagine my baby growing up in that environment, which I thought that was the only place I had to go back to, was my abuser and his family. I started talking about my situation and I got referred to TAP Domestic Violence Services. They let me know that they would help me and it gave me hope. So I had my child and was able to keep my baby boy because TAP gave some, gave me somewhere to bring my baby to after I left Bethany Hall. I didn't have anything, but I had my child clothes, diapers, wipes, even bought my baby a bassinet for him to sleep in. They helped me grow as a person and began to put the past behind me. They took the time to help me with my resume and my job applications and referred me to the TAP Restore Job Training Program. They helped me get my own apartment, which I couldn't be more grateful enough for because my baby had to go through an extensive surgery and I had to be there for him. And during that time, if it wasn't for TAP, I would have lost everything that I worked so hard to get. But once again, they helped me with diapers and wipes and paid my rent. My baby never went without because of them. They made sure I had the stuff I, I needed also, like toilet paper, cleaning supplies, et cetera. TAP Domestic Violence taught me that I could do this by myself and I never had to see my abuser again. I learned how to be independent. I learned how to be independent and I'm truly so grateful for their program. Not only have I learned so much about myself, which has aided me in my recovery, because I've been clean about 13 months because of them. They all made it possible for us to have a home. I will be forever grateful they made it all possible for me and my baby to have a chance to have a safe and happy life. Thank you.
Speaker five, Patricia Brumley.
Hi, my name is Patricia Brumley. I enrolled in the Virginia Cares Program November 2019 after being incarcerated at Western Virginia Regional Jail. When I arrived at TAP Virginia Cares, I was broken, but immediately felt that I was given an opportunity to change my life around. There, I met my case manager, Joanne Carter, and my employment specialist, David Winley, who both received me with open arms. They accepted me without being judged. Without this program and the support of Ms. Joanne and David, I don't know where I would be. I'm currently serving on Virginia Cares Women Task Force, went through vocational training and peer support. They helped me with my resume, got me a job, and strongly encouraged me not, I strongly encourage you not to let this program get away from us. Speaking on behalf of extra vendors, we need this program. Please help Virginia Cares to help us keep hope alive. Thank you.
Speaker six, William Tines.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is William Tines, a veteran of disabilities. I've had the pleasure of being TAP's client in the last 15 years. TAP has assisted me in many ways. When I was homeless, TAP helped me find a place to live, helped me with utility bills, and directed me to the proper channels for my veterans' claim to which I've been fighting for many years. Each and every time I've asked for assistance or guidance, TAP is there for me. I don't know what I would have done without them. In 2019, I was finally able to buy my first home and TAP assisted me in steps to complete the home buying deal. Total Action for Progress has been my stepping stone in my life. I'm very thankful that TAP is there for me in many ways. I know that Roanoke City is making budget cuts due to the coronavirus pandemic. It is in a time like this and more than ever that we need to keep supporting TAP's programs and its mission. Total Action for Progress is what TAP stands for in its core mission. Not only does TAP help veterans, but has many other programs that helps others in many ways. The Roanoke Valley and the surrounding communities count on TAP. I'm asking City Council respectfully to consider strongly continuing supporting TAP and its budget plans. Thank you.
Speaker seven, Sidney Taylor.
My name is Sidney Taylor. For the past three years, I have been a student at TAP. I am a youth bill graduate and completed the program after dropping out of high school since grade. I am working on my GD and have been in the homeless employment and learning program for the last three, for the last year. Since then, I gained full-time employment and have started working with the KE and monitor budget. I'm still in GD classes and have learned important skills to help me be successful. I ended up being homeless after leaving an unhealthy roommate situation with the help of a transitional housing program and TAP's help program. For youth and young adults, I was able to get my own apartment. TAP helped me get furniture, guiding me through setting up utilities, got me renters insurance, and continues to make sure I'm taken care of. Because of TAP, I'm able to further my education, be employed, and make my own money and have my own safe place to live. If I need anything at all, I know I can always reach out to one of the people at TAP. There are, there are a lot of other youth that are homeless and struggling that benefit from TAP. Please continue to fund TAP so that they can help other people in situations just like mine. Thank you.
Speaker eight, Craig Balzer, Sr.
A great evening to you, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of City Council, and City Manager Cowell. I'm Craig Balzer and I currently reside at 8480 Poplar Springs Lane in southwest Roanoke County. I'm an architect and serve as Chairman of the Board with Balzer and Associates located in the city of Roanoke and I also currently serve as First Vice Chairman of TAP's Board of Directors. I'm pleased to provide you a few thoughts and comments for your consideration and support of TAP funding. As a businessman, it is important to me to invest my time and resources in things that bring results. I've spent 30 years investing time and resources in TAP and it has paid off and it has paid dividends. TAP has helped people in many ways when others dared to help them. These include opening the first desegregated school in the 60s, Head Start, when the country was in the midst of Jim Crowism. TAP also started a statewide agency known as Virginia Cares Incorporated that gives a second chance to those coming out of prison as TAP helps them to reconnect with their families. families and find jobs so that they can become productive, law-abiding citizens. Their other programs include Feeding the Hungry and starting the first food bank in the region, now known as Feeding Southwest Virginia. Starting a demonstration project that brings indoor plumbing and clean water into homes, now known as Circap, whose services expand to rural communities all across the southeast region of the country is another example. By renovating and building safe and affordable houses and retrieving nine hundred dropouts when schools in, in our region were losing over five hundred children each year, TAP has set its mark. TAP has helped parents increase their education while their children are learning in safe environments. It has brought communities together through bridging the community gap when communities are split all across our country. As mentioned earlier, TAP spent or invested one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in two months to house the homeless, feed the hungry, help victims escape abuse, provide hygiene products for growing babies, purchase cleaning supplies, and train healthcare workers during a pandemic. The goal was to help people become self-supported while also helping them do it during one of the worst times in the history of our country. It has been a wise investment on my time. It's gratifying to be a part of an institution that champions equality, second chances, opportunities, and compassion. It's also a wise financial investment because my money is invested in people who want an opportunity to live out the American dream. They just need a fair chance, someone to believe in them, and someone willing and able to help them. For one doesn't look at the heart of the investment, one should look at the economics of the investment. It's a, TAP's economic impact is thirty-five and a half million dollars and employs three hundred and thirty-two people and creates one hundred and eighteen jobs. That's economically sound in my mind. I submit that if you decrease your financial investment, you decrease the ability to meet the needs of the growing number of four at a time when they need our help the most. You will also decrease the economic impact at a time the city needs it the most. Thank you for your time on this matter and your past investment of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council Members for voicing your support of TAP in the past, present, and into the future. Let us hope the final decision will be that, that TAP keeps the level of funding it needs. Thank you.
Our last speaker. Speaker number nine, Jean Yagro.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of council. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the nonprofit One Valley Incorporated, and is our partner Northwest Neighborhood Environment, Environmental Organization. We have been recommended to receive partial funding for our neighborhood development grant proposal to plant community fruit trees on vacant lots in northwest Roanoke. The partial funding will allow us to have a successful project on one of the three lots that we were planning on, on targeting in this project, and we're, we're confident that that will give us a nice showcase to, to build on for future projects. I only wish to thank the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates for their recommendation, and I encourage City Council to accept their recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor, that was our last speaker.
All right, thank you, and thank all of the speakers. We'll close the public hearing, and we will now go to item five B, which is a proposed real estate tax rate increase. We'll open the public hearing, and I will call on our clerk to introduce the speakers and/or read emails submitted by citizens.
We have one voicemail, Kathy Bailey, and one email that I will read following the voicemail.
My name is Kathy Bailey. I live at twenty-seven and nine, Lyddie Rose, Southwest Roanoke, Virginia, two four one two. And I'm a disabled homeowner. I'm eight hours nine years old. But every year, it seems like, I mean, you go up, I mean, you go up and tax on the, the trash, the, the money, tax on the storm drain. And so, and, and I, tax, and I don't want my house this year. When are you going to give it a break and not keep the one I'm on, on my house? I thought when I paid my house off, that is, especially what I did, is paid it off. But these taxes are terrible. So I am a big complainer of all these taxing reasons, especially for the disabled. Thank you.
And now I will read the email. This is from Haley Putnam. I am not in support of real estate tax increase. The real estate price, prices in Roanoke are already extremely high, as it is without adding additional tax on top of it. With the state of the economy and the people not being able to even pay their own mortgage at the current rate, now is not the time to increase those. Haley Putnam. And that's the end of the speakers for this matter.
All right. Well, we will close the public hearing, and now move to item five C, which is a recommended twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one HUD funds budget and twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four annual update to the five-year consolidated plan. And I will now open the public hearing. Now call on the clerk to introduce his speakers and to read emails submitted by citizens.
We do not have speakers. We do not have emails regarding this matter.
Okay. All right, well, we will close the public hearing, and City Council will adopt the recommended budget FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. Will be adopted along with other related measures during the City Council meeting on Monday, June fifteenth, at two o'clock P.M. City Council will also consider actions with respects to the proposed real estate tax increase and FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one HUD budget and five-year consolidated plan during the City Council meeting on Monday, June fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at two o'clock P.M. All right, there being no further business to come before the council, I want to thank all my colleagues for coming tonight, and all of the speakers, and this recent meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb and Vice Mayor Price, we want you to know that you're in our prayer. God bless you. All right, God bless all of you. Take care. Good night.